This is a regular meeting of Commissioners Court in Grimes County. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. Our agenda calls for us to call the meeting to order and we'll do so with an invocation. Charles Thompson, Reverend Thompson, would you lead us in that invocation? Would you all stand and remain standing for the pledge to the U.S. and the Texas flag? Please, sir.
Father God, we come again thank you for this opportunity to do your business. Father, we know that you are the de-judge and you represent the highest court of the world. Father, as your wisdom now upon the lower court that you have ordained to do your work here on earth, so ask for your wisdom, your protection, everything will be done in a timely manner. We thank you for the peace that you have given this county and this court and we continue to honor and glorify you in Jesus's name.
Jesus.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? Second item on the agenda is our public comments for Commissioners Court. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and if you would, limit your comments to two minutes, no more than two minutes. Mr. Peeler?
Al Peeler, building maintenance manager. June 15th is going to be the 125th birthday party here in Anderson. It's a Saturday. This is a free event for the whole county to come and celebrate the 125th year of our courthouse. We will have a time capsule, Model A, Model T car show. We will have bouncy houses for kids. We'll have an ice cream social, ice cream and cake social. We will have birthday cake, courthouse tours, we have a cake walk, we have brass bands, we have dignitary speaking. We have a full day. It's nine to one, right there on the street in front of the courthouse. Hope to see everybody there.
I don't have a question. Did you want to tell them what happens at nine o'clock?
Oh, pancake breakfast?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the thing I'm into. Pancake breakfast at the Sunshine Center at nine o'clock kicks it off. Then we go right into, the agenda really hasn't been finalized because we haven't got all the dignitaries back of who's going to speak and that, but I would be here at nine o'clock, eat pancakes. They're free. Ice cream's free. Lemonade's free. Anderson's doing hot dogs. So, we've got a good event. Please join us.
Thank you very much.
All the help would be...
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Peeler.
Are there any other public comments? I do want to just say thank you to the clergy of Grimes County. Last Thursday, we had our opportunity to celebrate the National Day of Prayer. We had stormy weather, but we had an excellent turnout at the VFW and Reverend Thompson was there and Tompkins was there and participated and appreciated that, but it was a very, very nice event. And then we even got to eat a little bit, nurse the bodies after it was all over. So, put that on your calendar for next year if it's not typically on your radar. So, thank you, sir, for your participation and thank you for helping put that event together. Are there any other public comments? You want to say anything about management?
I have to stand, don't I?
Okay. I just thought that was a good deal.
Well, I want to say thank you to all of the community members and all of those that participated on Monday night. We had a community meeting over at the Progressive Center in Navasota just to highlight some things that the county that we're doing, improvements we're doing, city improvements so that our citizens will be aware, just a time to sit down and hear from the citizens. So, it was very successful. We had about 56 people there. We had about 369 views on Facebook. So, we were very excited to have everyone at the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Last call. We will then move to agenda item number three, number four, and number five, which are our consent agenda items. Agenda item three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Agenda item four, consider and take action to approve budget amendments and/or line item transfers. And agenda item number five, approve minutes of previous Commissioners Court meetings, workshop meeting on April the 8th, 2019 at 6:30 PM, regular meeting on April 10th, 2019 at 9:00 AM, special meeting on April 17th, 2019 at 9:00 AM, and regular meeting on April 24th at 9:00 AM. See attached minutes. Are there any comments or questions on any of the...
I do have a correction.
Okay.
On the minutes for April 24th at 9:00 AM, I was present. It says I'm absent, so I just want to make that correction. On the 24th.
I think I might have been absent that day, yes, ma'am. You were. See.
So, it was Commissioner Dobieinsky.
You all look alike.
Yep. Why, thank you.
Finally, I don't want to say something out of line in Commissioners Court.
Thank you, John C.
They both look like Commissioners, what you meant, right, Counselor?
Of course.
Of course, all right. All right, so we'll make that correction. Are there any other corrections that need to be noted as these are official documents?
You just talking about the minutes for any of them?
Three, four, and five, sir.
Okay, yes, I do have a question. On the list of claims for the IT department, there are two laptops for the SO Office for 7539. Is that correct or is that a typographical on the invoice number?
It should be correct. I don't have the invoice, I think that I can...
Those are the tough books. They're big, heavy-duty computers that they keep in their other vehicle.
Vehicles.
Now, that just seems a little high for two laptops, but...
If there are no further questions, then I make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three, four, and five with the corrections noted.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, number four, number five by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We go to agenda item number six. This will be Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, Samuel Catrina, Cortina, excuse me, Cortina. Consider and take action to approve proclamation, the month of May as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Grimes County and authorize county judge's signatory. See attachment number six. I don't believe we have anybody from that agency. Do we do? Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you folks want to say anything about the proclamation?
Yes, Your Honor, please.
If you'll come to the podium, identify yourself. That would be great. And we'll even let you read the proclamation if you desire.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll do my best. Adult Protective Services investigates allegations of abuse, neglect, and exploitation for elderly or adults with disabilities. Many people who are elderly or have disabilities live alone or are dependent on others for their care. Isolation is a factor that places vulnerable adults at risk for abuse, neglect, and exploitation. APS provides or arranges services in an attempt to alleviate the problem. APS is dedicated to ensuring the health and safety of vulnerable adults in Texas. APS's frontline caseworkers investigate these cases and oftentimes have a strain on the ability to find available resources to alleviate or prevent further maltreatment. At times, a client's situation may require immediate response, which may include providing food, hygiene supplies, housing, legal action to protect the vulnerable adult. Half of the cases that APS receives involves neglect, the most common is self-neglect, although through illness or diminished mental capacity, vulnerable adults may no longer be able to provide adequate care for their own health and safety. They may live in unsanitary conditions without heat, running water, may need assistance with meals, daily activities, or required medical care. Caseworkers for Adult Protective Services provide or arrange services to reduce or eliminate abuse, neglect, and exploitation. This may be as simple as assisting them with bill pay, purchasing groceries, life-sustaining medications, arranging services for heavy housecleaning, extermination, or building a wheelchair ramp. Sometimes it's often complicated to the point that caseworkers may seek a court order to protect the personal health and safety of citizens who are incapacitated. State law requires anyone who suspects abuse, neglect, or exploitation to report it. You may do so by calling the 1-800-252-5400 hotline or txabushhotline.org. Here in Grimes County, we received 181 intakes last year and provided 107 clients with services. Thank you, folks.
So, more than half received services?
Roughly 60, 65 percent.
Your name?
My name's Lee.
Last name?
Piggins.
Okay. We need that for the record. Would you like to invite the rest of your team to join you as you read the proclamation?
Oh, that's all I have. I don't have a proclamation.
Okay, well, I do. And if you like, I'll read that. That be all right?
Appreciate it.
Okay. 2019 proclamation declaring May as Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, whereas people who are elderly and have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Grimes County by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds and, whereas these residents are vital and integral members of society and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and whereas Texas APS in-home caseworkers in Grimes County have investigated 181 intakes, of which 107 cases of abuse, neglected, and/or exploitation were confirmed against our elderly Texans or those with disabilities in 2018, whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because of elderly who are being abused, find it very difficult to tell anyone, and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid, and whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some ways, in poor neighborhoods or in suburbia, and whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Therefore, I Judge Joe Fowth III do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 to the Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Grimes County and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities dated this eighth day of May 2019.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation, the month of May as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Grimes County and authorize county judge's signature.
Sign.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number six by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Consider it done, sir.
I have a question for you.
Is it?
How many counties do y'all serve as a Brian office?
Out of Brian offices, it's 10 counties.
10 counties, okay.
Could we get you to introduce the representatives you do have?
Caseworker Arius Turner and the darling of Grimes County, Stephanie Ward.
Thank you.
And just for the record, what do y'all consider elderly?
65 and over.
Yeah.
Well, some of us fit and some of us don't. Keep your numbers to yourself. Folks, very seriously, thank y'all for the work that you do in our county. We will now go to agenda item number 11, Grimes County Sheriff's Office. Chief Todd Green, consider and approve the Grimes County Sheriff's Office to auction the listed items. Proceeds to be funded to 451-505. See attachment number seven. Chief, you want to take us through that?
Before we move on, I have something to add to that last item. He said 65 and over, but they also serve underage people who are disabled. If you have a disabled person that's being abused, you can report that at any age and it could be as young as 21.
I was just, at the moment, I was concerned about the elderly since I...
Sure. I'm in that category also.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner?
That's it.
All right. Chief?
Good morning. This is a agenda list, auction of some surplus used equipment and property that we currently have. We tend to do every year auction these items off to help offset purchasing, you know, some more equipment for future use.
And have we kind of checked around the county to make sure that none of these vehicles would be, or any of the, I'm mainly looking at the vehicles, but any of those would be better utilized in other areas of the county versus running through the auction?
Obviously, there's a couple that are real, high mileage.
Right.
There is, number one, obviously, doesn't show high mileage, but we have done extensive work. That's a diesel engine. We've done extensive work on it and it's continuing to fail. The cylinders, we've already sleeved them and stuff like that.
Sure.
And it's continuing to fail, so there'd be a lot of money that will have to go into that vehicle to even make it usable. The 2013 number three, the Chevrolet Tahoe, that's another one we've had extensive repairs on. There's kind of a major electrical issue in that one. By all means, if somebody feels they can get use out of something, they can definitely kind of look at it and...
Well, I didn't know if environmental had contacted you about any vehicles?
No.
Okay. So, this is a wide list of various items. Where did all these come from?
One, two, three, and four, obviously, those are county assets. Five is a vehicle that was seized or recovered in one of our cases and the owners have refused to come pick it up. It's actually been awarded to us. Same with number six and seven, eight, and nine are all like that. Ten and 11 most likely were on previous auctions. We just, people buy them and not pick them up, so we just resell them.
That's cool, man.
I think for the whole lot of those, I think we'll get like $5 for it. And if they refuse to pick it up, we just sell it again next year. Technically, I guess we just don't weigh at this point since we've made them available in auction and all, but we can get another $5 out of it.
Sure.
We try. The number 15 is the 2016 Denali that was seized and awarded to the sheriff's office. We previously brought that one to court, a possible trade-in. We looked at the trade-in value, so we want to see if we could try to get a little more money. Auctioning off, if not, then we're going to put a reserve on that one.
What's the reserve going to be of that?
Probably what we're getting from the trade-in. And obviously, for purposes of the auction, it's going to be hidden reserve, so I wouldn't...
Okay, it's a hidden...
I wouldn't want to put that in this one court. But we're trying to get more money because the part of that agreement with the DA's office is we're going to purchase a vehicle with it. Any remaining funds would go to them to help offset a couple of expenses that they're looking at buying some cellphone technology and equipment that all the vendors can use. So, we're trying to get the most value we can to save the county as much money as we can, so we wanted to have them negotiate with the trade-in value, so we're going to try to see if we can squeeze out a little more money out of it.
Can I ask the auditor, 451-505, that's the sheriff's office?
Yes. Shooting equipment, one item.
So, there's mixed items on here and some of them are county surplus items and some of them are asset forfeiture items, I assume. And those types of auctions are two different types of auctions.
Well, everything that's been seized and everything has been awarded to the county.
I understand that, but I think there's a process and I think they're governed by two different statutes when it comes to auctioning salvage or surplus property and when it comes to asset forfeiture. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of the auction of asset forfeiture being different. That's being your purview, having been there before. I suspect if you're aware of that, something I'm not aware of.
Well, I think the Code of Criminal Procedure outlines the way in which items that were seized in asset forfeiture have to be disposed of versus the way county surplus and salvage property have to be disposed of. Either way, I mean, it's just, they're two different processes.
Are they both auctions, though?
No, one of them's the sheriff's sale.
One of them's what?
One of them's the sheriff's sale and I believe that the state's attorney has to administer the sale and direct the sheriff to sell the property. I don't know, and I don't want to speak out of line here, but that's what I think.
Well, you would know better than I, I guess, being part of probation, but I've not ever been made aware of that, would not ever pursue that in an asset forfeiture. I don't know that the DA's office has ever conducted a sale or ever authorized the sheriff's office to conduct a sale.
Are these civil or criminal assets? Was I wondering if they're civil or was there a conviction involved with the...
I'm the team that asked for forfeiture seizure with a civil process.
And I'd be happy to look at it, Commissioner.
I think it probably would, if you wouldn't mind.
No, I don't mind.
I mean, they probably need to be disposed of in two different manners.
I'll be happy to.
Chief Green, I know that I've been made aware that, and I think I maybe mentioned talking, checking around, the department head checking around to see if anybody was getting rid of any vehicles for this upcoming budget. They were needing another vehicle and it was just to go out and pick up money from the environmental stations and they were having to share a vehicle. So, I'd asked that they check around. How soon are you going to do this if you've got approval today?
Well, if we got approval, we'll contact the auction stuff.
Does the 13 Tahoe, is it an issue consistently? I mean, does the vehicle...
Yeah, as you see, our vehicles, you know, the other Tahoe, the 2009, that's got 241,000 miles on there. We currently are in a real situation right now that we don't have a whole lot of spare vehicles to use, so when we're taking things to the shop, we're very limited on what we can do. Is issue bad enough that we are getting rid of the vehicle?
Okay.
I mean, and if you historically look at when we auctioned these vehicles, they are very well-used.
Is that the black one behind the department over at the DA's office? That's not...
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And based on whatever the county attorney recommends, I'm not sure that, I mean, I think those funds have to be split up. I don't know that they can all go back into 505.
So, are we going to table this until the attorney has an opportunity to investigate your request? Is that what you're asking?
No, they can do it. I just want to make sure that we do it.
Properly, why?
However it's dictated by law.
So, Mr. Foltz, can we go ahead and approve, let this item be auctioned, and then if there needs to be any variance to how that is done, then you'll get with the sheriff's department?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. If that meets and addresses everybody's questions, is there a motion on agenda item number seven?
I'm lucky you made it all the way.
All right. I make a motion on agenda item number seven to allow the sheriff's office to place these listed items to be auctioned off and also determine where the funds go, do counsel with counsel. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by County Judge Joe Fowth. There's a second by Commissioner David Dobieinsky. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If the city attorney lags on getting this information, let me know. We'll talk to him.
City attorney?
Our county attorney.
No need to involve the city attorney.
No, we don't. No, you're right. You're right. Let them handle their own stuff, correct? Well, you didn't look like you were listening. I just wanted to see if you were listening.
I was trying to find the statute that you were cautious of referring to.
Agenda item number eight, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator, Mr. David Lilly. Sir?
Yes. I'm here to present on behalf of Mr. Creek, who's requesting a variance be granted for how he's having his property divided. A little background on this, and you guys, all of you, should have a copy of the proposed division in front of you. The way the property currently is laid out, we call it, it looks kind of like a chair, as you can see. Mr. Creek's property is the larger portion and there's a one-acre portion underneath the chair. If you notice, though, there's a property line that goes literally right through the center of the mobile home on his property, and apparently this was done, a bank that I guess he owed some money to for a loan or for some mortgage or something. They repossessed a one-acre portion of his property to cover, you know, the part that he owed them, but when they did that, there was no thought given to how they divided it and it was recorded in the appraisal district on their map the way you see it now. And what they're looking to do now is, he's working with the loan company or bank to resolve some further back money that he owes them, I believe, and they have agreed in return that the portion that they're going to be taken from him, the larger section on the right, there's some back taxes owed on that, I believe, to the tune of about 30, Commissioner, was it like 36,000, I believe, 35,000?
Yeah.
That they've agreed that they're going to take care of that and pay that back, you know, or cover the cost of that so that he doesn't have to bear that anymore. So, with that in mind, again, I advise Mr. Creek that he was entitled to request a variance, but again, if the Commissioners Court votes against the variance request, then he would have to go back and submit a plat subsequent to this, and he understands that. Again, after reviewing this, I feel that in this case, this particular example is very unique. I've never, in seven years, I've never seen a proposed division of land... I've never, in seven years, I've never seen a proposed division of land like this where it resolves more issues than, you know, it's, I don't see any problems that it's going to cause, but it's going to resolve several really crucial issues. In particular, that property line that goes through the center of the house. So I felt that in this case, this one is, uh, unique in its own aspect and would, you know, merit a consideration for variance.
I guess I'm not understanding the variance. You're saying this is the way it's currently laid out or?
No, the way it's currently laid out is, like I say, if you look at the lines, uh, the way it looks like a chair, that's how it's currently laid out. And the proposed division would change that to where Mr. Creek's would have the
Okay, I see it now.
The two acres that's shaded in blue on the left would be his property and then the bank would have the 2.5 acres on the right side.
Okay. You, you familiar with it?
I am familiar with it, yes. Uh, it cleans up a lot of issues, uh, with regard to this big piece of property. And I have spoken with, I think, all the parties. And, uh, it's my, my, it's my understanding that they're going to, uh, clean up the back tax issue if, if the variance is, is approved.
Well, to clarify, Commissioner, they will, whichever way, if it's whether the variance is granted and allows them to proceed with the division the way it's shown now. Or if the decision is not to grant the variance and they have to plat, the bank is still agreed with Mr. Creek's that once they obtain the property from him, they're still going to cover those taxes. That's not contingent on the variance.
I'm not opposed to it personally.
Then do you want to make a motion?
Can I, can I ask a question before you do? Where does Renner fit in? You're saying the bank, where?
He represents the bank or mortgage company, yes, sir.
And I originally, or I wasn't sure, didn't have Ariel in front of me and we had a conversation about it, but it looks to me like, uh, both parties are asking that their tracks be divided, right?
Yes, but when I, originally the request was from Mr. Renner and when I first drafted up the variance request, uh, it was actually with his name on it. But, uh, actually the larger portion of property that's being divided is Mr. Creek's. So I was advised it would probably be, you know, be more appropriate to have the request come from Mr. Creek's. But really in principle, it's from both of them because they both have partial holdings in the property that's going to be divided.
And the, just to clarify if you will, the, uh, the parcel to the right after the division or after the variance or, uh, he, there is no plan to subdivide that property?
No, no, it's going to be absorbed with the other portion that's on the right. So it would actually result in two lots again, but the lots would be two acres, as shown in shaded blue on the left and the larger portion on the right, which would be approximately 2.5 acres.
And they're going to have to do the deeds to reflect what one is conveying to the other?
Yes.
And that's their issue, it's just a matter of whether you're willing to permit that arrangement. So they've still got to work out payment of taxes, if there's any additional consideration, what those deeds look like. It always happens that that's not something that you technically are involved in, you're just deciding whether pursuant to your subdivision rules, is this something that you want to apply the rules and acquire a platform? That's what you're facing today.
Is there public water?
Yes.
And there is public access, or there is access for both pieces of property?
Yeah, they're both directly adjoining 105, yes, sir.
So currently one drive, there's one drive now, so is, you're saying there's another one?
This, the property on the right hand side still has access to 105.
Okay.
They, they abut the easement to 105.
Okay.
So I move that we approve a variance according to Section 232-001, uh, of the Texas Local Government Code. For Mr. Creek's request to, uh, not plat his 4.5 acre lot, A0476, and that H Wingfield Track 9, uh, that it be divided into two lots of 2.5 acres and two acres.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Mallon, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
This will bring us to our road and bridge engineer, road and bridge report. Item number nine, consideration and possible approval for an electric line installation permit application from Mid-South for CR 127 and CR 161, our attachment number nine. Mr. Walker?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Mid-South is proposing to construct underground depth banks along County Road 127, across County Road 127 and along County Road 161 up in the alley area. They are proposing to comply with our requirements for depth of cover and those types of things. So we are recommending that this permit application be approved.
Do you have to look at, on this, I'm just seeing 127.
Yeah, if you look at the exhibits, they cross 127 and that same line extends down 161. Yeah, probably we should have listed both ways, but they, they haven't spoken to what they propose to do. Mr. Mallon, is this your precinct?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of any issues or anything?
No, I'm sorry. I move to approve an electric, an electric line installation permit application, uh, from Mid-South for County Roads 127 and 161, as shown.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Commissioner Mallon, second by Commissioner Dobianski, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 10, Consider Act on Resolution Authorizing Submission of the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, better known as CDBG-DR, application to the Texas General Land Office to provide drainage and street improvements related to Hurricane Harvey, see attachment number 10.
Say that three times quickly.
No, sir. I very distinctly just said it one time.
This is a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the, uh, General Land Office for a grant related to Hurricane Harvey. In, in this case, their process has been kind of, kind of changed from normal and discussed it before. We have already been told how much money we're getting and now they're saying, go submit a grant application for that money. Normally they say submit a grant application, we'll tell you how much money you're going to get. So we've been talking about the Hurricane Harvey grants for a while. This is just the resolution officially authorizing, uh, submission of that application. The application currently is, is we have an extension granted until June 30th to get that application in. Some of the other communities in the county will be doing the same thing, uh, under application extensions to August 30th. Later on this summer, uh, we'll have the application in to basically to show the GLO how we're proposing to use the money that they've confirmed to us.
Do you typically have to have a grant writer to collect?
We have been using, uh, grant writers, uh, almost exclusively since I've been here at least. Again, we're working with Grant Works, they were previously hired, uh, to perform these services. And I've found over my career that working with grant writers is just more successful than trying to do these things on your own. They're, they're professionals and they know all the right buzzwords and, you know, little intricacies and the rules and regulations. It just seems like we're much more successful when we work with grant writers.
I think it's great. If there's no other discussion, I'd like to make the motion to act on resolution authorizing submission of the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery application to the Texas General Land Office to provide drainage and street improvements related to Hurricane Harvey.
Second.
Nobody's requesting the resolution to be read, are you? Thank goodness. Hearing no further discussion, there's a motion before the court on agenda item number 10, Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Dobianski. Honestly, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 11, Consideration and Possible Action on Revision to Grimes County Temporary Waterline Permit, see attachment number 11.
As you may recall, earlier this year, uh, we created a, a permit application form for temporary water lines. These are the above-ground lines or can produce, um, oil drilling operations. We had our first, uh, contact from a drilling company, uh, asking to file a permit. And when they got our, our permit requirements, uh, they were, were fairly shocked. The, the permit requirements, uh, basically, we charge a fee of $500 per crossing of a county road, plus a dollar per linear foot of the line laid along the right-of-way. And I freely admit this was plagiarized from another county's permit application. When the drilling company saw our requirements, uh, they contacted me and they said, the per linear foot cost will cost $45,000 for this permit at that dollar per foot rate. And we discussed that. They, uh, they generally go to private waters to obtain, they're pumping water to use in their fracking operations. Because the permitting process, uh, to get permission to use public waters, uh, is so tedious. So rather than going to a nearby creek or to the river, uh, they'll go to someplace where we have a man-made tank, uh, you know, stock tank or, uh, in many cases, it'll be an old gravel pit that's filled with water. In this case, uh, they're running approximately nine miles to find water. And they suggested that, uh, you know, they couldn't really afford to do it that way. And asked if we would consider amending the permit. After discussion, I agreed with them that I'd bring a permit amendment to you and reduce that per linear foot cost from a dollar a foot to 10 cents a foot. It would bring their, uh, permit fee or the linear fee down about $4,500 plus the $500 per crossing. I think that's reasonable, it was never our intention to make the permitting costs, uh, particularly burdensome. We just felt like it was appropriate because of some of the administrative issues, dealing with these permits, handling some of the complaints and calls that come in, uh, that there should be a fee associated with it. But again, we did not intend, uh, and quite frankly, I had no idea that they would go this far to obtain water. They said, yeah, they've actually gone as far as 15,000 feet, uh, pardon me, 15 miles, uh, to get water in other cases. So I think this is a reasonable compromise, we'll still get a, a permit fee out of it, uh, to address our concerns. And it won't be a, a financial burden on the drilling company. Any questions?
Yes, I don't have, I don't want to limit the county getting funds, but, uh, they're, they're drilling on private land?
Yes, sir.
It almost seems, and I don't want them to disrupt the tape, the water tables for neighbors around and residents in the location who might be on a well. But wouldn't they do just as well to drill a well to get the water and then the well is the benefit to the landowner once they leave?
That would be an option, uh, but of course the drilling cost for a well and the permitting issues there are a significant burden also. And not everywhere, in, in this particular case, uh, the well site is out in the TMBA minefield. And so there are some issues with the water coming out of the mine.
Sure.
Yeah, that's what really surprised me because there are lakes all over that property.
Right.
Very nearby.
Right.
But there are some issues, uh, actually using that, so, uh, yeah, that would be an option. And I've seen in other cases where drilling companies actually would put in a water well. But again, it depends on how deep they have to go for the groundwater table, that kind of thing.
Sure. I just, just a question, thank you for answering that.
Can I ask a question? What if you tell them it's $45,000 and that's it?
Uh, then they'll probably go through the TCQ permitting process and delay their project for six months or a year.
But permitting from TCQ for what?
To obtain rights to use public water.
What public water?
If they, the alternate source would be to go out of Rocky Creek or one of the, the, uh, natural lakes in the area.
On number three, I mean, throughout the, throughout the permit, uh, Grimes County and the act have referenced that. And it talks about if there's a covert that's not of adequate size, that a new, new covert will be required to be installed. Should it specify who's going to install that, install that since it's specified elsewhere?
All the work associated with establishing the line is on the applicant. We don't, we don't put any source in for them. They would have to come in, do that work, obtain proper permits to do that as well.
But if the question is, can, can the permit form be made clearer?
Yes.
If the court desires?
There's certainly not a problem with amending the permit form.
Right.
Yeah, we're proposing an amendment here. In other regards, we can make that amendment too, would not cause any issues.
I, I think you probably, probably would be best to indicate that it would be the applicant's responsibility to do that.
So in summary, on this application, it's about a $5,000?
Yes.
License fee?
Yes, sir.
With modifications?
Again, the, the actual, if you choose to amend the permit form, then they will come back and submit an actual application for that permit. This is not to grant their application, but just to consider revisions to the application itself.
Could I ask another question?
Sure.
How many of these have we done, Harry? And what have the fees been?
This is the first one.
There's never been a temporary water?
We just developed this permit, uh, I'm saying February.
February is the number of the vice dated.
The, the original company that approached us about that has never come back to us. This is a, a second company, uh, but this, the first one is actually proposing to submit an application. That's where some of these issues are being flushed out.
So if the change is made, not going to be a significant change in whatever revenue has been received as a result of these permits because there's been no revenue to this?
There has been no revenue received in the past, at least in recent past.
So you said you modeled this after another county?
We, yes, we.
Is this standard, I mean?
Most of the counties we looked at don't charge any fees at all. But the ones that did, uh, particularly Brazos County, uh, they charged a dollar a foot. And the $500 crossing was fairly common, uh, across the, the different counties that we looked at.
But most of the other remaining counties did not charge per linear foot?
That's correct.
And whose precinct is this, well?
This would be precinct one.
Precinct one. Therefore, Commissioner Mallon, do you have any thoughts or comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with, with changing that.
Okay.
But I did notice though, too, for Commissioner Cox's question about addressing the applicant, I think in I think in number two, it says applicant will install covers for cases to be utilized for crossing in the number two section.
Yep. So Commissioner Cox, does that cover your concern or add character that you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. All right. So other than the money amounts, are we in agreement that the permit looks acceptable to us? If that's the case, Commissioner Huff, do you want to make a motion?
I move to revise the Grimes County Temporary Waterline Permit from $1 to 10 cents per linear foot.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 11 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Cox, with the approval to adjust the money amount as indicated. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Walker, your road and bridge report, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Been picking up a lot of downed trees lately between the saturated ground conditions and some of the windstorms we had last week or two. We've had a lot of calls for removing trees from the road, almost nonstop calls yesterday or Monday morning for additional trees. I'm sure we'll have some more after this weekend.
Yeah.
It just, you know, the ground's so saturated, a lot of the trees we're seeing, a whole root ball is pulling up. They're not breaking the trees, they're just laying them over. We've been doing a lot of that. We're continuing to haul a lot of rock, work on roads when we can, when the weather conditions permit. The continuing work, we're getting ready to send the pipeline companies, pipeline company that's active right now, another bill for road damages. They've been particularly hard on some of the asphalt roads recently, and it's time to get caught up on that. We have had a couple of meetings, David Lilly and I, with FEMA and the Tidham folks relating to both, primarily to the October 2018 flooding, but also some additional conversations relating to Hurricane Harvey grant process as well. That's all continuing on, and we're continuing to work on the planning and design process for the new barn under 2445. Questions? We also, we do have several places this morning where we have roads underwater. I'm sure that list is going to grow this weekend. We're expecting five to 10 inches of additional rain between now and Sunday, so it's a good time to pay attention, stay on the highways, off the back road where you can.
What are you going to do about all this rain?
Rain?
I do have a serious question on your second item, road fires on 344. I was on that road Saturday, and I was noticing the cold patch on it. You know, was it water crossing the road, or do you know what happened?
No, that again was the pipeline company. They have an access point to the old Center Point Transmission Corridor alignment at the very north end of 344.
Yes, sir. Were there dead ends there?
Were there dead ends, and they've been running pipeline-related trucks up and down that road heavily.
Because that's one of those chips sealed not that long ago.
Yeah, I'm pretty frustrated with that, because it was my understanding that they weren't going to be using those roads, and then at the last minute, they obtained access, they found a place they could get access where none of the property owners, and we wanted to grant it to them. And so we've got some damages to roads that we could have just held off until they were finished to deal with. It is what it is at this point, we just have to maintain it. Good news is we're starting to get into paving activities for the summer. We've gotten a little bit of, you know, appropriate weather to start doing some of that activity.
Any additional response to your weekend or your fifth-day, sixth-day overtime ditching crew?
We have not had favorable weather conditions to do much, particularly the ditch work is highly susceptible to the rain. It's just not productive to try and dig ditches in the rain and haul off that wet dirt. You can't get into people's pastures to dispose of the dirt, so it's not, certainly not worth spending overtime money to do that. So we just, we canceled last weekend, we canceled this weekend.
It kind of, I guess it kind of reinforces, though, the idea of using our current team in overtime versus hiring a second team for the time being.
That's true. We would have had people that had nothing to do, there's only so much oiling and greasing equipment and cleaning the barn that you could do.
Will you send them to the law library and let them dust books or something? Probably not, they're cup of tea. Are there any other questions for Mr. Walker?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number 12, County Judge Joe Falt, Discuss and Review Language for Employee Performance Evaluation Form, see Attachment 12. I received some discussion on this, and I'm open for clarity of information. I will say that on page one of the evaluation, where it says elected official, the whole intent of having that elected official line there was so that myself and the commissioners, those areas that we have responsibility for, was to sign off to make, just so that we were saying, we know this has been done, and if we hadn't been signing off, then it wasn't being done. But I think there was some misunderstanding or confusion that maybe I didn't make myself clear. So commissioners, how would you all like this language modified, or what do we need to say so that it was clear? Or do any of you object to having the elected official signature on the front page of the evaluation?
Well, I think I gave you a phone call about it, because the line above there, right above elected official, says employee performance evaluation shall be completed on this form and approved by the elected slash appointed official, our department head, prior to the following of the annual proposed budget. I think it was confusing to a lot of our department heads, and I think as a department head, if we don't have enough confidence in them as a department head to sign off on performance evaluation, then maybe they shouldn't even be department heads. I objected to signing them, because I did not perform the evaluation, I don't even know who the people are. So I felt like if one department had a supervisor that did her employees' performance, and they had a line where they could sign, but then she turned it into her department head. Ultimately, the department head that we evaluate, when we have them coming for Commissioners' Court, those that sit upon the Commissioners' Court, we then check with them then as to, have you done all of your performances, which, what have you accomplished, what have you done? And then we sign off on their evaluation. To me, it made more sense. I brought it to the attention of Ms. Pope also, and also to one of my department heads, and I did talk to Mr. Walker, and it was kind of confusing to everyone. And I think it just should read elected official slash department head, you know, either or could sign it, because I have no knowledge of who the people are, but I do have faith in the department head's ability to know that they should be performing the evaluation, and then if they haven't, then we deal with that, with their evaluation.
Okay. Well, the way the form was set up on the last page, it was for the supervisor's signature that if I, if Mr. Walker is my direct report, I would sign off that I have evaluated him, and then he's evaluated, then he signed off whether he agrees with the evaluation or not. And then the elected official was, again, just, that's just kind of a checkoff signature. That was my intent when putting this, and I totally understand where people that are, because on the road and bridge folks, I did not, I got a whole stack of road and bridge people. I read through the evaluations to see, in my opinion, they were properly completed. They were signed off by the supervisor, but then I initialed them and sent them on to HR.
But it almost skipped him, you know, because you have supervisors, and if they performed the evaluation, then they brought them to you.
They did.
Then you sign off, but you didn't get a chance to sign off, because the elected official signed off.
I signed off on the ones that I did the direct evaluations for. Where I had delegated that to the foreman and supervisor, they signed off on them.
And I just, like I said, I was going by what I was reading, you know, I wasn't here and didn't have those discussions with everybody, but I just believe that we have to have faith in people that we put over departments to do what they're supposed to do, and then if they don't, we deal with them in their evaluation.
Well, I have no lack of faith in those folks, so based on your comments, what would you, how would you like it, would you like the elected official scratched off of the front page?
You could say elected official slash department head, because your line says it can be any elected official, appointed official, or department head.
I guess, I don't see how that clears up the issue, because if I evaluate somebody, I'm going to sign it on the back page, then why would I then sign it on the front page?
Well, even like for environmental, you have environmental and garbage. So you had people who were supervisors did their employees, then you, and environmental, you had supervisors that did it in garbage, and then they brought it to the department head.
Okay.
To meet the department.
So if it says department head or elected official would satisfy?
I think so, you know. I think it would clear up the, your sentence says one thing, and then your signature line, I just think it just should probably just say elected official slash appointed or department head.
Other comments? Commissioner? I guess essentially, Mr. Walker would have signed off on all the other ones that the foreman did on his front page, by what you're saying, I guess. What Commissioner Walker would say.
I mean, yeah, I guess that makes sense, because ultimately, he's responsible. He may disagree with what his supervisors have to say about the people that they're evaluating, and he may override what they have to say on that.
What is your feeling on this?
Well, I would agree, the wording on the first page, and there was a memo that came out later to it, was a little confusing. I started signing the first page of all of them, and I said, "Well, I'm not, it's not clear." And I asked HR the question, and they said, "No, that's for the elected officials," so I sent the stack over to the judge. You know, I understand where the judge is presenting a checkoff to make sure that, you know, the elected officials are performing oversight on the review process. I think it's probably appropriate for the department head at least to sign and indicate that he's doing the same thing, because as Chris Walker pointed out, I only signed off on three of the 35 evaluations from my department, the general superintendent and my office staff. So where the ones that the general superintendent did or the foreman did, I'm not signing off on those the way the form is set up now.
Yeah. Ms. Pope?
If I understand right, we created an organization chart, and in that organization chart, so many departments were put underneath the judge, so many departments were put under you, Commissioner Walker, so many was put under you. Philip, I don't think, David, or do you have anything underneath you?
No.
And so?
We need to change that.
We're in.
Well, I guess there are also liaisons, but they answer to the whole court, I guess, as well.
Right, right.
So virtually, it would be kind of a review of the whole court to that instead of just one signature.
So that's why. I felt the way the judge did.
And we do review the department heads and the elected.
We do, right. So I, you know, whatever language you need to put in, because alls I'm trying to do is to, one, we tried to simplify the form this year. We went from eight pages to four pages, and two of the four pages are instruction.
Right.
So we're trying to simplify the process, but it is important that our employees, whoever's responsible for them, is evaluated on an annual basis. So we can talk about their past work, we can make, set some goals for their future work. So whatever, if we need an elected official slash department head slash supervisor, you know, because some organizations like yours, Harry, have multiple levels, so.
Or possibly provide signature blocks for both the department head and the elected official.
Yeah.
I will just make a comment. Everybody that I talked to liked the new form, it was much better than what we had in the past, and thought they were much more appropriate for what we're trying to do. So this is a minor issue, fair enough, but.
Well, we give Ms. Pope credit for that, okay?
Whoever. People like the form.
Okay.
I just seem to think, you know, you could say elected, just like we got it reading up there, elected slash appointed official or department head.
Okay. So we'll make that, we'll make that change under that line on page one, and hopefully that'll add clarity to it. This room approved by, yeah, the elected, appointed, or department head, fair enough.
Or.
Well, that's the way the language reads in the paragraph above. It says elected, appointed, because I don't want people to read it next year and go, "Oh, the elected official needs to sign it, the appointed and the department head." We just, I'm just trying to, from my perspective, make sure that it's done.
Well, it's a new document, too, so I did go ahead, after I had Ms. Lee sign, then I signed, because I didn't want to hold up the process, but I just thought we needed clarity on it.
That's fine.
After talking to some different people about it.
Thank you.
So if you'll make that change, Ms. Pope, all right? Then we will move to Agenda Item Number 13, Discuss and Take Possible Action on Reducing Discontinuing Post Office Box Use. I don't mean to create an uprising within the county, but my office, with the help of Ms. Wagner, has taken a look at the number of post office boxes that we have, and you have a sheet in front of you, but this is just Anderson. And the question she posed to me, and I think it's a valid question, do we all need post office boxes, or could we just give street addresses and let the postal service deliver mail to our offices? I believe counsel from Mr. Foltz said it's not a law, or?
I'm not aware of a requirement to have a PO box.
A requirement to have a PO box. I do understand that when mail's to be delivered on Saturday, and we're not here on Saturday, then what are they going to do with that mail, or if an office is closed on Thursday? So we just, I'm just throwing this idea out each to his or her own, do we need the post office boxes? And I guess part of it would also be, as we get prepared to, if and when we move to a new building, that it would be nice if we had a central delivery for at least all the offices that are over there, and have the mail delivered versus us having to go pick it up, because when we do get the new office, it's not going to be across the street, it's going to be across the street, or down the road, across the street, et cetera. So as we plan for the future, and as we might need to get our people that pay us or inquire to us or send us information, get them more familiar with street addresses versus PO boxes. Anyway, open for discussion, comments, thoughts? And again, this is just the Anderson list, so I imagine most of precinct three and four is going to come through the Navasota PO boxes, or do y'all get delivered?
We have boxes out front that mailman.
Okay, so you get street delivery?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't.
You don't?
No, I have a street address for my office, but my PO box is actually through Lucy's office.
Okay.
That was just the way it was set up when I got.
That was just the way it was set up when I got here.
Okay, well, you have the opportunity to change it if that doesn't work for you, or leave it alone if it does work for you. That's your call. But we're just, and it's not a huge amount of money, but, you know, if we cut it in half, it's 500.
Yeah, if we, if we put, what we're talking about is putting all the mail together and have it delivered, or...
Yes, sir.
Who's going to disseminate that mail once it's delivered to the county?
Well, nobody probably wants that, but I, I haven't talked this over with Lucy, but I'd probably have it sent to her office.
That's what I was thinking, and probably go personally.
I mean, we have the boxes in our office.
Exactly. It only makes sense.
We can just have the mail delivered, and then I'll have Donna put them in the boxes.
We'd get her to skip lunch every day and sort mail during the summer.
Is this something we can talk about in budget hearing, or, like you said, there are days when this building is closed, or somebody's not here, and then you have county court at law, you have the district clerk, you know, you have people who have timelines that they may have to meet and are responsible for, and to not be able to get in your office to get their mail could become an issue, you know? Maybe ask them, since they're not here.
Right, no. Well, and that's why we put it on the agenda, just to get kind of within the county some public response and interest. And I think everybody ought to have interest, because they're interested, I want to keep my PO box, great. I don't see a need to have a PO box, great. So certainly, yes, we can, and that's why we're throwing it out now, because we are going to be having budget discussions. So we'll take no action on Agenda Item Number 13 at that, this time? We've had some discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, Agenda Item Number 14, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. We'll probably hold what we have. And any updates on strategic plan, Item Number 15?
The animal shelter board met Monday. With my absence, I had a doctor's appointment for the final review of the needs assessment. We will shortly be getting a floor, kind of a floor plan, and then we'll get architect with that and start some fundraising for the shelter. Also, last Friday, Commissioner Walker, myself, met with Michael Parks, BB COG, and some individuals in the county that's starting a internet company for, out in the rural areas. Michael Parks brought to our attention that they have applied for a grant...
For those that are listening in, who's Michael Parks?
He's, he's the, works with BB COG from Raz Valley Council of Governments. He is, I guess, project manager for the ring that's being put in, in the five counties, the fiber ring, and he's put in a $5 million grant through some funds from Hurricane Harvey to run a line down 1774, which will go to hopefully High Point School in Stonem, and then all to Todd Mission. And this money's available because of Hurricane Harvey, and he's going after some of it to tie into this ring. If that happens, it's going to facilitate more fiber out in the rural areas, and especially out where 249 is coming in, where we expect a lot of growth. So I'm really excited about that. I'm excited about a company that's moving forward with getting internet out in the rural areas for the county. And there'll be more information coming forward on that sometime next month. We're going to have a presentation from the people who are putting this together.
They're going to present to the court?
Yes.
Good.
And I think that was number three on the strategic plan list. Representative Lamont and I were in charge of getting the high-speed internet ring to the county, but my, part of my, my part of that was working on getting it to the rural areas, and it was like, hopefully that's fixed, that's going to happen.
And as you mentioned, in talking with BB COG and Mr. Parks, they are now in talks with, this is what they call the last mile provider, who will take internet into the homes. The ring, they're not interested in taking the internet into the homes, they're interested in providing the fiber, enough fiber, as it moves throughout the county, so that other providers can be, take it to the home and keep it competitive in pricing for everyone. So that's the good news, that whatever's going to come, we can get it to the residents, and that it will be competitively priced. I mean, you can get it now, but you might be paying hundreds of dollars for it, but, you know, this is going to make it more available, and then it's going to make it more affordable.
As BB COG has stated in the process, the more people that we can get involved in the process, like the cities, the county, and the school districts, and the COG ring, the cheaper it's going to be, and it's gone down every time we meet, the price of it's going down. It'll be the same thing with this rural system. The more people we get involved in the system, the cheaper it's going to be, because the prices will come down. And the prices for it, for that's been coming down.
And I'd make no mistake, if he said that they also received an extension on getting it, the ring put in, because they've run into some roadblocks in Navasota with the railroad tracks, and so they got an extension where it was going to, the deadline was 2019, now the deadline has been moved to 2020.
Due to 2000.
And they are now coming up, you see them coming up 90, headed to Anderson and on up to B-Dieses.
And you are correct, it is number three on the strategic plan summit. Well done. Are there any other updates?
Can I ask a question? You're talking about this ring, with these people coming in, so will this internet be available just to get internet through them? You won't have to worry about going to your phone company to get this internet, or is that something...
Not from the BB COG ring, but the company that's...
Right, from the distributors to the homes.
It's, it's not going to be through fiber, it's going to be through, and if Rick Cannon was here, he could, he could talk to the technical part of it, I don't understand all of that, but it's done through antennas and microwave.
That's two different kinds.
Yeah.
You have one that's currently in the county, and he's working off of towers.
Yeah.
But you also have, when the ring comes through, they're putting enough fiber already in the ground that they can sell to last mile providers, who will then bring it into your homes. You can, whether it's, whether it's a huge net, I'm just throwing out names, but it will have providers that then take it to the homes. So that's who the public will deal with. But right now, it's just going to governmental hospitals, anything that's providing health access. So they are putting enough rings in the fiber, in the ring, to sell to providers, to provide internet through fiber, but we also have them, the gentleman we met with is also providing it through airways or microwave, tower-to-tower side-of-line access.
The phone companies, the phone companies will not lay the line to individual houses because of the cost, the expense of it. Laying fibers is way too expensive to do to individual houses, so that, in my opinion, that's the only way that we're going to get it out to the, to the areas right now with the population density that we have. And as you well know, I have two subdivisions on the east side of my precinct, and have a lot of people that try to work from home there, and the service that they get, they cannot do that. They have to go somewhere during the day to do that, where they can get high-speed internet. And through this process, their telecast told us in the meeting the other day, that this type of operation will run, any type of business that you need to run with it, so I'm really excited about it.
I'm excited because I just got it at my house. I just got it at my house, and we are more than pleased on how it's performing, and right now, it's only available in the southern parts of Graham's County, right outside of Navasota, going south, in White Hall, and the Blackjack area. So if you need more information, I'll be glad to point you in the right direction.
Yeah, because I'm not far from White Hall.
Okay.
And I will have it, hopefully, next month.
Good, good.
Any other comments on the strategic plan in regards to updates? Then we'll move to Agenda Item Number 16, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd make the motion to adjourn.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 16 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. Is there any discussion? Hearing none on the paper, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Just to remind the court that there is another agenda that we are going to pick up, since this meeting is adjourned, but I would like to take a five-minute recess.